Two, three, four, five. Okay, so we're gonna call our meeting to order at 6:04. Can I get someone to make a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move.
Thanks, Fernanda. Well, thank you, Brett. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you for that. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. I see a couple people on the line. Is there something that you would like to communicate with the board? Either Susan or Amanda?
No, just here to listen.
Okay, Susan, do you mind if we have your last name for the agenda meeting?
Yeah, I'm Susan Price. I work right next to me.
Oh, Susan Price. Thank you. Okay. And Amanda, you didn't wanna talk to the board either?
No, I'm just trying to represent Neshewee.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for being here. And Natalie's online now. Okay, great. Okay, I don't have anything else for communications with parents, citizens, and staff. Do you, Kristen?
I do not. I'm not sure if the October reach out got included in the packet. If it didn't, I'll make sure Melinda includes it for the next time. But in the month of October, Ovu did not get any reach outs.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Can I get someone to make a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda. Excuse me.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It was Kevin and Brent? Or Brett, excuse me. They're even sitting next to each other. Thanks a lot.
We'll get there. We answered both of those.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to monitoring reports, right? Thank you. First one is 2.2, which is the treatment of staff. So Kristen, do you wanna talk a little bit about it? Or everybody should've been able to have a chance to read it. I didn't see anything that flashed out of me. But if there's questions for Kristen, you should ask them now. If there's any questions you have about her choice of information, or questions about the information she provided?
What page are we on in the packet?
That's a good question. I don't have that in front of me.
Excellent question. Pretty far down, I think. Thirty-three? Yep, thank you.
Okay, you found it, okay?
Right after the one labeled fifty-two.
Well, there you go. See? We know our number's here. All right. So, any questions for Kristen? Okay. All of those in favor of, actually, I need someone to make a motion to accept 2.2, treatment of staff?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I second it.
Okay, so it was Kevin and Brent. Thank you. All those in favor of 2.2 treatment of staff as in our packet, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, 2.2 passes, thank you. We have one other monitoring report, which is 2.8, which is communication and support to the board. Should also be in your packet. Again, if you have questions or things you wanna discuss with Kristen from her report, please ask away. Hearing none. Any of those who would like to make a motion to accept 2.8 monitoring report, communications with the board, please signify by, or please make that motion.
Oh, I'll move it again.
Thanks, Kevin. Is there a second? No, maybe I'm talking too fast, Fernanda. Thank you. All right, all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to pull up the packet on my own phone. Keep pulling up. Okay, so we are now moving to our own board monitoring report, which is 3.3, which is delegation to the superintendent, which is on page?
Forty-seven.
Thank you, forty-seven. Get there myself here in a minute. All right. Which I can't read, cuz it's too small. So this is the report that we filled out last year. The question is, is if you have any changes that you wanna make to it? If we haven't done something or did something new that we didn't do last year? Again, this is all in regards to our delegation to the superintendent. Cuz we did change 2.6, we added 2.9. Those are all things we did last year, so we can probably get rid of those.
Recording in progress.
Oh, there we go. Ooh, we're a little late. Anything else you wanna change? Under examples of where we did something, the stuff where we changed 2.6 and we added 2.9, those were things we did last year. We, I don't believe we've changed any of that stuff this year. We did add, is there 2.10, or we talked about a 2.10? I don't remember. We really haven't changed our policies much. Kristen, did we change our, when did we change our 1.0 policy? Was that last spring?
Yeah, last year.
Yeah, so that's, I think, needs to be put in there. That we, that we changed our 1.0 statement. Anything else? Anybody wants to add, subtract, change? Yeah, Fernanda. Oh, I can't hear you. You're muted.
I'm just wondering about the community forums. If those apply to evidence of one of these parts?
I don't know. Well, that would be a good question. Maybe, and maybe not. Since the community forums are being done by the administration, that's not necessarily us doing it. And this policy is specifically us delegating to the superintendent. And we didn't delegate that to her. I don't believe, those are just things she's doing on her own. Very well, I might add. So. Okay, hearing nothing else, if someone would like to make a motion to accept our 3.3 with those couple of changes?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Natalie. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Fernanda. All those approved 3.3, please signify by saying aye. Feel like I'm pulling teeth here tonight. Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's move on. So our next one is a new policy. It's policy code DA, which is the ELE fund investment policy. This is specific to, for those of you who are new to the board or haven't heard of the ELE fund, the ELE fund is a trust fund that was set up exclusively for the Neshewee school many years ago. And it actually funds some of the things that happens at Neshewee. Specifically, right now, it is funding the the loan that we did for the revamping of the school as far as the heat reduction and the pellet stove that we currently have there. Anything else that it's doing, Kristen? I think that's the only thing at the moment. So, as you'll see, there's a lot of red crossouts and a lot of new red stuff. I should've made Brenda stay, so she could explain. Can we get someone to make a motion so that then we can talk about it?
Sure.
I'll move to approve it.
Thanks, Natalie. Seconding by Kevin?
I'll second it.
Okay. Wish I could read it better. So anyway, the ELE fund is not managed by us, it is managed by an investment company. So that we direct to do that, I suppose. And we are only allowed, I think it's 3% each year as a, to take out of the ELE fund, which is why we can't take out any more than what is the loan currently, because that is the total amount that we can take.
So it's 5% in here now?
Is it five? Okay, well, it might be five, but.
It was three to five, no.
Three to five?
Yeah, in the revision, it's five.
It's now five?
It was three to five, and then if you didn't take three, you were in.
Thank you. Okay. So, any questions about the rewriting of this?
Sure.
Yep.
Why? It's, it seems like it's simpler language, which I guess is good. But just wondering why the change.
Can you speak to that, Kristen?
I mean, I just sort of saw emails back and forth. There was sort of a probate provision based on attorney language last year. And so it really was sort of to come in compliance with that. Brenda also thinks that it's simpler and makes it just more clarity for the actual policy.
Okay. Other questions?
I guess I would like to just know more about that fund.
The ELE fund? Well, it was set up, I don't know how many years ago now.
In the nineteen fifties.
Yeah, it was set up exclusively for Neshewee School, to support the Neshewee School. It's same as your BURDIT fund, which is set up to exclusively do the Lothrup School. And so that fund is available to us, but only, as you can see by the policy, that we can only use so much a year.
Right. But, and this really isn't what we're talking about, but I know, cuz I asked you, how would you access the BURDIT fund? But I don't know how would you access the ELE fund? Is it the same way?
No, it's different. It is different. So the ELE fund completely, I don't believe we have to go through a committee. It's mainly that we are allowed 5%. And that is, and we can access that each year. So there is, there is no restriction as, we don't have to go to the board. We don't have to go to the select board or anything like that. No one has to agree like they do with the BURDIT fund. The BURDIT fund is, for those of you who don't know what the BURDIT fund is, just a moment, Fernanda, the BURDIT fund requires that the, there be a unanimous decision for any monies coming out of the BURDIT fund by the Pittsburgh Select Board, all members, and the entire board of the OVUU. But it also, but both of the Pittsburgh members have to vote yes to, or it goes down. And the monies can't be used from the BURDIT fund. Fernanda, you had a question?
Yeah, what do these funds typically get used for and who decides what they go to?
So typically, they're used for facilities or big ticket items that we wouldn't normally do through our budget. So like I said, the ELE fund is currently being used to fund the bond that we have for the major upgrades that were done to the Neshewee School that goes through two thousand thirty-something or other. So we won't be using the ELE fund for anything else for another ten years or so. And the BURDIT fund is usually for something big. Last time we used it, they did Markowski, they did some stuff for Markowski Field. And other than that, I don't think we've used it since. Cuz we said no to their, to the sidewalk.
Well, it's doing the boiler there at Lothrup.
Right, it is doing, that's right. That's, that's correct. It's also doing the boiler at Lothrup. The BURDIT fund is doing the, the upgrades.
Can this fund be used for, can it be used for other schools besides Neshewee?
No, it can only be used for Neshewee, just like the BURDIT fund can only be used for Lothrup or Caverly.
Well, last year, we didn't use the ELE fund, right? For the debt service?
That's correct, because the, the fund was still low. We wanted to hopefully build back.
Right. And if these numbers are accurate, then I would think we're probably gonna do that again?
I don't know. I, we, I believe there's a meeting to be held with them next week. So Brenda's having a meeting with them to discuss. And then that would be part of our budget discussions. Any other questions? Specifically about the ELE fund. Yes, I see your hand, Greg.
We have, I assume with the ELE fund, there's some sort of statute that's written about, you know, so who can use it and its authorization and everything that's in this? Right? I'm just assuming there's something that defines the ELE fund somewhere else besides this policy?
There is a trust fund, yes, there's a trust fund document.
Like a trust at some time?
Yes, yep.
But, like, so what, what was the purpose of this policy? Cuz it feels like we're deleting a lot of the things that the board, it's just all the stuff that refers to us is being deleted. And I don't really see anything left that refers to us in this document once we revise it all.
Good question.
Is that okay? I mean, we're not mentioned in this policy?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, related to that.
I'm just asking, I don't know.
That the last paragraph changes Otter Valley Unified Union School Board to School District, does that mean the board's not in control of it anymore if we make that change?
No, I wouldn't think so. We are still the school district.
Right there, that's true.
I think, well, so there has to be a second reading. So those concerns, we can flag, which are being flagged right now in our minutes. And we can have Brenda come back next meeting and discuss before we do a final agreement to this policy. Is that okay with everyone? Is that all right with everyone? All right. We do need to vote on this for at least the first reading. So all of those in favor of DA, the ELE fund, whatever it was called, ELE fund policy, investment policy, please signify by saying aye. Okay? And all those opposed?
I'll say nay for, for this reading.
For arguments, okay. That's fine. And we will make sure that we at least have some, either Brenda comes via Zoom or at least gives answers to those questions.
Can we have her do a brief on all the funds?
There's only two.
What are these other, we, in our consent agenda, right? There was two other small funds that are out there that I've never even heard of before, so.
We can never do that. Not during budget season, though, is that okay?
Yeah.
So in the spring? You all right with that? All right. Sorry, I'm just making myself a note. Okay. All right, we need to finalize, well, we don't need to finalize board goals, but that's what I have here. We've been talking each meeting, or at least each first meeting, about where we wanna go from here. The last meeting that we had four weeks ago, when we spoke about this, was we had looked at the deck of, that we had from when the task force had finished up. We also were looking at Kristen's five-year plan, one, three, and five-year plan, and how they might mesh into what we would want for board goals. So we said we would continue that discussion tonight. Where we stopped was where exactly we wanted to jump off from. We can jump off from the deck, from the task force, and say that those are, those goals are still relevant. We can determine whether or not those goals are no longer relevant and move in a different direction. But we need to start somewhere. So I'm leaving it up to you guys where you would like to, to start. Do we still wanna middle school? Do we still wanna communicate with all of our constituents out there in all six of our towns? Those were the big ones from the task force. And then, of course, we have the one, three, and five-year goals with Kristen, who is now doing community forums and trying to also engage the public. And do we wanna somehow try and do that together? Not together?
Yes, and no.
Okay. Expand.
Well, I, I think some of the task force stuff is probably still relevant. Other things aren't, right? Like, I don't know if we wanna hitch our wagon to the redistricting stuff that was in there, right? So it's like, you know.
Redistricts?
Wasn't there some stuff in there about Brandon kids going to Lothrup?
Oh, no, 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 no. That was, no, that was, that was a budget, that was one-year budget blow up. No, that, no, that's not in there.
I, I mean, I think we probably owe it to the people today to find out what their priorities are. I think a lot of it stays the same, right? Cuz obviously, things haven't changed, but I don't know if going off of a task force from five years ago is the right thing.
I don't know, well, it's better than, I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't go back and start from square one. We can. You're absolutely more than welcome to do so. I, I do think it's important that we start talking to the community and hearing from them. I mean, I think we all know that people are feeling the pinch of money. That's not different from four years ago, but I think it's worse than it was four years ago. I also think that a middle school model still makes some sense, but not five through eight, more like six through eight. But what does that look like here at a footprint of Otter Valley? You know, how do we, how do we do that? And they're already doing some of that already internally. You know, do we see if that works? Or do we still wanna bring our sixth graders in to alleviate some pressure from the schools that are feeling overcrowded?
They won't overcrow this if we bring them in here?
We currently have, how many students, Kristen, here? Three hundred and something, I wanna say? I don't think so.
About which school?
Otter Valley.
Michael, no, Michael, how many kids do you have, Owen?
I think it's like five, ten, just over five.
There's five somebody in school.
Okay. So.
How far did we get with that concept? I know there were some renderings of what proposals could be. But do we ever do like cost analysis, like actual operating costs? I mean, obviously, bond aside, what would it look like for our operating costs if that, if that middle school existed?
To be completely honest, we got to the, we got to the two, we had two slides. One where it was out there in the middle of the football field, the old football field. And the other one where it was, we hitched it to the wagon here. And I think that's pretty much where all of a sudden COVID started and, and we didn't get any further than that. So we could, we could do some cost analysis now.
I mean, that, I think that would help feasibility-wise, right? Like, if, if we know that we can only increase our cost X amount every year, which we apparently know now, right? With the new funding model. And it's gonna cost us five times that to operate a middle school, well, then that kinda answers the question for us.
Well, and there's also the question as to whether or not, you know, the, the model that they had where the, where we were adding on to Otter Valley was not the model which I've been hearing more about, which is hitching on to Otter Valley, but going that way. Because then we would be able to access the kitchen and the auditorium and things like that without having to go through the entire school. I don't know how that would change things as far as what the plans might look like. And if we would get pushed back from the baseball field, cuz I don't know how far out we'd be going.
You could even just overpass and just leave the road. Just put a building over there.
Well, true, yeah.
We don't have to disrupt the circle around or anything.
That's a possibility. It's probably more expensive, honestly. Don't know that, but, but it's well worth a shot of thinking about.
Yeah, I don't know who can answer that.
Michael, do you have your hand up? Do you have any thoughts on this?
I'm coming in late, so I'll be honest, I'm not quite sure what the discussion is.
So we were just talking about the middle school model that we had thought about four years ago, and then COVID happened and it imploded. And so we were talking about whether or not we wanted to continue that discussion as a board and what that might look like.
Yeah, I think for programmatic reasons, the conversation makes a lot of sense. I think for, there are some staffing challenges that come up with being a seven-twelve building with lots of shared staff. That if you added sixth grade, a lot of like roles could become full-time middle school roles, which would be to our benefit. And, you know, we've done some work this year with the board support around, like, really separating our, our middle school classrooms from the remainder of the building, so that we can have a middle school model. That's imperfect, though, in a shared building, where we share so many classrooms and the library space and cafeterias. So I, I encourage the board to consider, or to continue to consider that, that middle school model. Location-wise, I think it, it would likely be a question of cost. Whether we're looking at building a, a new building, I'd encourage it to be on the Otter Valley campus if we're talking about a new building. If we're talking about adding a footprint to Otter Valley to be the, the building where it is now, that would likely be a less expensive, but not as great an option from programmatic, from a programmatic standpoint. So that's kind of a non-answer, other than to say, I think, I mean, I, I am eager and I would be excited to have a six-twelve building at Otter Valley.
Fernanda, I saw your hand up.
No, I guess that was, that was my question as well, was how, how in the priority list for Kristen and Michael and the administration, how, how high is the middle school model in that priority list? And if it's pretty high, then that should be a focus. It's gonna be a big lift. So I don't know that we wanna fill it with a whole lot more.
I, you know, I think, Fernanda, that's a, that's a great question. I would say, before I sat in this seat when I was the curriculum director, I also came to you all to have a conversation about why a six-to-eight middle school model made sense, right? Why developmentally for students and also programmatically for Otter Valley? As the person sort of in charge of the curriculum instruction lane, it just makes sense. Now that I'm, I'm switched, I've switched seats, not only do I continue to think that the conversation should keep happening, my brain is also constantly drawn to the very real facility and space issues specifically at Otter Creek in Neshewee. You know, we sort of shifted the inter-district transfer policy last year. Thanks to all of you for allowing those changes, which also has forced us to really specifically look at who's in each of our buildings, why they're in our buildings, and what the capacity would be if they weren't in our buildings. And we, this year with OCA, they're sort of busting at the seams, right? Even with the modular, they're sort of overflowing. And now we've found, I mean, we figured out, they're not law students, right? But, but as we're going through to track it, we see that there are also twenty-three students who, before this year, have requested to go to Neshewee for, you know, a ton of reasons, siblings, daycare, whatever, that if for some reason they decided, I wanna go back to my home school, Otter Creek couldn't maintain them, right? So there, there are also some real facility needs in addition to what the district sort of sets as best practice programmatically for a middle school for the board to really consider.
Question from Mr. Rappel.
Sure.
A little simpler, I think. So we have an imperfect situation now with a seventh and eighth-grade middle school. I'm assuming it would be more imperfect incorporating sixth graders in the current footprint. footprint. So the question is, in your opinion, would incorporating a six-to-12 model at Otter Valley require new construction in some form?
It would require construction in some form, yes. Again, I think the possibilities that the board has considered are um, a new campus in the Pittsburgh area, uh, a new building on the Otter Valley campus, and then building off Otter Valley, uh, on the existing footprint. Any of those options are workable. But if, if you were to add eighty-five to ninety students to my building every year without adding several classrooms and probably things like gym space, uh, we would really feel that pinch.
Makes sense that way.
I hope that answered your question.
No, it didn't. Yep, thank you.
Brett, what did you, I didn't hear you say.
To me, it doesn't make sense to add on.
Okay.
Without having a separate building, because you're adding more classrooms, but you're not adding more facility as far as more gym space, more cafeteria space, more auditorium space. You add more students, but you're just cramming them into, this could be classrooms, but everything else is still time-consuming and crammed. I mean, right now, how people can't get into the gym to do sports because it's tied up with, they can't do basketball because it's tied up with wrestling or whatever the case may be. So if you have a separate building, you'd have a separate cafeteria, you have a separate gym.
Well, I will tell you that um, I, every time I walk into this school and I see a certain someone, she constantly says, when are we getting our new audit, or our new um, gym? I want another gym.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, and, and it's not just because of the after-school stuff that goes on in the gym. It's also during the school day, what happens in the gym and the noise, and it's hard to teach when you're in a, a gym with uh, two different classes in there and um, it's loud and it's, it's hard. So um, yeah.
So could we, could that be part of our goals, vision, whatever, to get some kind of an impact study to look at? Building aside, right? We've seen pictures of buildings and said, okay, this is what it could look like. We haven't really gotten real numbers, but that's okay, because we don't need that right now, right? What we really need is something we could sell to the community to say, here's an impact study, you know, Neshewee parents, here's what your classes would look like if you didn't have the sixth graders. Or OCA, here's what your day would look like with, you know what I mean? Like, and then what is the cost burden that it's going to add, if any? May, I don't know, maybe it's not significant, I don't know. But I think that would be really helpful to sell this, right? Like, if we say, okay, we have this overcrowding and here's why and then.
And the enrollment goes up every year, so if you keep adding students, if you put an addition on, 10 years down the road, all of a sudden, it's not big enough anymore.
Well, unfortunately, education changes, so the, you know, the, the number of square feet that one student needs increases for some reason.
At the end of the parking lot down here, the road goes out to the other fields, and it's like shrubs and bushes. We don't know that, too.
Yes.
So that potentially could be a space, a place for another building.
Well, we've talked about putting a building out there.
Where there's already nothing.
Um, there, on the old football field.
Leave the fields, go to the other side of the road, to the left side of the road, toward Route Seven. Between Route Seven and the field where there's nothing. Leave the fields, put a building where there's already nothing.
I don't think we can. Um, Fernanda, do you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I guess I want to bring us back to the agenda item, which was.
Sorry.
No.
I'm wondering about bringing us back to the agenda item, which was goal setting.
Sure.
It sounds like we're all in agreement that a middle school model should be a goal.
That we should continue to talk about middle school? All right, thank you.
Almighty powerful.
All right, look at that, look at us go. All right, so we definitely want to keep looking at middle school models. So maybe at one of our next meetings, we'll, we'll take some time and, and dive into what we think we need, and hopefully Mr. Rappel could be there in case we have questions. And um, even by Zoom is, is great. To help us figure out what exactly we would need, or at least um, communicate what you think you would need for, for a middle school um, to Kristen or to someone so that we can have that information. What about any kind of um, community outreach? Do we want to do that? Are we, I mean, obviously, we try to do that around budget time, but we should also, I mean, there's lots of community outreach by Kristen. She's got her superintendent's series. There's um, you know, they're highlighting all the schools every month, usually one each time via YouTube. Hopefully, people are seeing that. But what is it that we want the community to know from us? Usually, the only time we hear from people is when they're mad about something, as evidenced by all the people here wanting to talk to us tonight. And um, you know, what is it that we want to communicate to them? That's one of the things I always have a hard time with, is what do we want to communicate to them? When we talk as a board, you know, yeah, we can communicate this middle school model stuff, but outside of that, our normal, everyday stuff that we do, what do we communicate with them? What should they know?
Well, what they should know and what we communicate, I think, are unfortunately two different things. I'm a pessimist on this. There's a, there's a really famous book in sociology called Bowling Alone. It's about how people have dropped out of community involvement in everything, garden clubs, school boards, you name it. And uh, that book's twenty, twenty-five years old now, and it was written pre-internet. And we've only had a situation where people have, you know, dived into their phones, into their, into their devices in, in, in the succeeding years. So I think it's very, very, very difficult to compete with infotainment. And uh, you know, this stuff is obtuse, it's difficult, the discussions can be lengthy, as we all know. You know, to, to, I'm just joking here, George, uh, but if we want people's attention, we should bond a hundred million dollars for a new school, and then we'd have their intention. But uh, until then, I'm not sure.
Send a motion or?
I'm not sure how to get it.
I don't think you'll get a second out of that one.
I don't think I'll put that in the paper.
Thank you. I, I will say that as far as community involvement, I'm not so sure about Pittsburgh and Leicester, and Sudbury doesn't really do a lot of community stuff. They hate kids, I think. But um, because every time I brought my kids to stuff, we get sneered at, but my kids are older now, so maybe not anymore. But anyway, um, Brandon, though, is a thriving community with all the stuff that happens here. And I think both, I think Pittsburgh is, too. They do all sorts of trunk or treats, and they, you know, so did Brandon, and, and we're doing all sorts of stuff to get people involved. Uh, you know, the spaghetti supper that wasn't as well-attended as I would like, but still saw tons of people who are not connected to the school who came out for that. You know, so there are people, people want to be involved in the community, but they don't necessarily want to get involved in this stuff because it's not fun. I mean, you think about it, it's not, but, and it's not getting your hands dirty. Sometimes you want to get your hands dirty and hand out those treats or, or, you know, do something good for the community, hand out baskets of food at Thanksgiving and whatever else, you know, might be happening.
Well, you, you could do things like spruce up the school, you know, have a day where you come in and you do gardens.
Right, well, and, and Otter Valley already does that in the spring, you know, so yes.
I, I would offer our services as, you know, as a newspaper to like have a regular function from the board, where you, every two months, you write what's happened, you know, so I can report what goes on in the board meetings. But if you want to give a more overarching picture of it, I mean, we're totally open to that every month or every two months. Board chair or, you know, a designated could send that in, and the superintendent could certainly do it, or the principal of any of the elementary schools, we'd be happy to print that. We'd, I mean, we, I think it's a conduit that's not being used right now.
Sure.
From the schools to the community, especially the community that doesn't have children.
Yeah. Disconnect there.
Sorry. It's like they don't know I'm in a meeting. Okay.
Natalie has her hand up.
Okay.
I would say, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
So um, I think one of the goals in the task force was community engagement with the board. And having worked in community engagement for seventeen years, I think one way that we, as the board, could get involved is to, to tack on to other events that are happening in the community. So like at the trunk or treat, maybe the, we could have a table there that, for people to come talk to us, because you're right, people aren't going to be coming to these meetings, they're kind of boring. And if we want to get input from the community about the board, we need to be more visible and more out there, and perhaps we should do that by looking at events that are happening around the communities and make ourselves available to be there.
Yep. All good ideas. What time is it? Okay. All right. So um.
Well, what's our latitude to do something like that? Like?
If we wanted to, I suppose we, I mean, if you find out something that is going on that you think the board should be part of, send me a message or send Kristen a message, and we can, you know, do a quick doodle poll that doesn't violate open meeting law, and if it's gonna, you know, if we need to do something prior to the next board meeting, or talk about it at the next board meeting. It's that simple.
Yeah. But that doesn't rise to the level of something that would have to be approved here.
Not necessarily. I mean, if we ought to do a trunk or treat in Pittsburgh and here in, in Brandon, then we should do it. I mean, just candy. I'm sure you have enough money to cover the cost.
We did trunk or treat anyway, yeah.
No, but, but, you know, and, and in the meantime, we could hand out a little piece of paper with it that just says, you know, the board is, is um, excited to hear from you and, and use the phone number or the, uh, it's not let's talk anymore, it's whatever it's called now. Reach out, the reach out. Yeah, whatever. People already figured out my cell phone number, yeah.
What about polling? You know, it doesn't have to be in the form of a poll, but uh, you know, we're having these discussions. I think everybody on the board is aware of um, the problems that are leading to, to us to, to lean toward a middle school. I think most of us are. But, you know, George just mentioned the people without kids in the community. That's a, that's a group that's going to be a lot more resistant to these, to these arguments. Just letting people know so they're not surprised. And I, I'm not sure the kind of trunk or choice is going to work, work that. I, I, I think that, you know, Castleton used to have that, that polling institute in Rutland that they closed, which is unfortunate, but, you know, a mailing, you know, we're thinking of building a new school, what do you think of this? Or, you know, would you, would you rather see no changes? Would you rather see uh, a modified OV? Would you rather, we go whole hog? I mean, the kind of decisions we're struggling with, if we don't have public input, it, we're just going to be surprising people, and, and the people who are inclined to say no are going to be angry immediately. Let, letting people know this is coming down the pike is, and here's why we think it should happen, because it's, it's bad for little kids to be around obnoxious sixth graders. It's good for, for middle schoolers to be segregated from high schoolers. It's uh, it's uh, better to capture middle schoolers' interest in science when they're young than try to do it when they're juniors in high school. All these arguments that we're, we're familiar with make sense, but people haven't heard them, and, and making them as, as openly as possible, I think, is, is only going to help.
Well, that's why we have the reporter, like you said, and.
If you've made those, you know, in a series of, made those arguments, then when you said we want to do a middle school, people would have background to be able to look at and say, oh, I remember hearing about this, about how that six-to-eight grade kid is different than the high school or, or the elementary school and why it might be important. I'm willing to support such a thing. How much is it going to cost me? Oh, that's not too bad. Okay. You know, people would make a decision versus if you said, we want to build a ten-million-dollar school, this is why, that's a harder sell, because they see only the ten billion dollars. The rest of it, they give us, right? So I would think you'd want to do all of your prep work, why we want to do this before you ever said money. Just my thought.
Yep. Good idea. Okay, so in the interest of time, um, I think we've got to start here, and so I think what we'll do is um, maybe next meeting, depending on what's going on with budget, we'll um, we'll bring back those um plans that we had for the middle school, the two plans that we had, um, and start from there. And we'll think about using the reporter in some fashion. Is that okay with everyone? Yeah? Okay with everybody online? Yes? Okay, good. All right. Open board seats. Um, as you know, Derek and Eric both had to relieve their seats due to different things that happened to them. So in your board packet, there are um, letters of interest. There are three letters of interest for the Brandon position, and there is one letter of interest for the Pittsburgh position. So um, for those of you online, so that you can vote, I don't have my cell phone number. I'm going to tell it to you right now so that you can vote to my phone. Because I think we're going to do this by paper, unless you want to do it in.
Fifty-one?
In open session.
We can do the Pittsburgh one in open session.
Well, yes, that one, but I, the Pittsburgh, or the Brandon one, I didn't know if you, you know, want to do that one in paper. Okay. So um, Jasmine, do you mind going and finding some paper that we can rip up into six pieces here?
Yep.
Please, thank you. So why don't we start with Pittsburgh while we're getting paper for the Brandon one? In your packet is a letter of interest from Brooklyn Markowski. She is interested in the Pittsburgh uh, position. As you all know, that position is only good until March. If we do give that position to her, she would have to um, re-up uh, in January and get on the ballot for the March um, ballot in order to maintain that seat. So um, does anyone want to make a motion regarding the Pittsburgh seat?
I move to nominate uh, Brooklyn Markowski to the school board for Pittsburgh.
Hey, is there a second? Second by Brett Mullin. Okay. Any discussion? Probably shouldn't be, honestly. Okay. All those in favor of Brooklyn Markowski um, being um, our new board rep from uh, Pittsburgh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, for better or for worse, Brooklyn Markowski, you are it, so congratulations. Um, we'll have someone, uh, either Kristen or I will reach out to her um, to welcome her to the board and get her ready to attend our meeting on November 21st. Okay. One, two, three, four. All right, do you mind passing these down? So um, in your packet also are three letters of interest from um, people in Brandon. One was Padua Gamba, another one was Phoebe Foreman, and the third one, someone, please refresh my memory, it's a gentleman.
Jeffrey Heiser?
Yes.
That could be the wrong.
Yeah. So um, sounds like he's new to the area. But anyway, so what I would like you to do, for those of you who are online, my cell phone number is, or you can email me, but my cell phone number is eight zero two nine eight nine two three six five. Please send me a message as to who you would like to vote for. And then the rest of you can write down who you'd like and send it over here, please.
Can you put the number in chat?
Um, nine eight nine two three six five. Thank you.
Lori, are we, are we, I'm sorry, are we voting for two or one?
No, just one, uh, just one for the Brandon, sorry. Please only pick one.
And how long would they serve on the board?
Um, again, this would be, uh, they would have to re-up on the board uh, for March because they have to rerun for the rest of the seat. So this is only until March at this point. And when you're ready, you can send your. Okay, Jasmine, you are up with me here. Here, you, you do the.
Okay.
Okay?
Mix it up. Okay, this one's blank.
Okay. I made a pass paper, I should have.
Um, Jeffrey Meiser?
Jeffrey Heiser, okay.
Padua Gamba. Phoebe Foreman. And Jeffrey Heiser.
Okay. Okay. And then online, just so that everybody sees who I have here, uh, Padua, so that I'm not lying.
Okay.
Padua. Padua. And Phoebe. Okay, so two, six, seven, eight. So that's eight of us. There are eight of us online, or eight of us altogether. Eight. So, um, looks like Padua wins. Uh, votes four to two to two. So Padua will vote out to her, or will reach out to her to let her know that she has won the board seat, um, until March, unless she decides to, uh, run again. So, thank you for that, everyone. And also, while we're talking about open board seats, um, there are going to be seven seats up for reelection in March, two of them being these. So if you are up for reelection this year, um, you don't have to make a decision now, but if you are not sure that you're going to continue on the board, please be thinking about someone who might make a great, um, addition to our board. Um, and, and start, uh, talking to people about, uh, the board and, and what they could do to help us move forward. All right. RNESU Board Update. So, I can tell you, we just had a board meeting, um, before this meeting, uh, and we were talking a lot about the preschool boundary. I don't know if you guys know what that is, but essentially, the preschool boundary, uh, in RNESU is a boundary that allows our preschoolers, three and four-year-olds, to access any of our programs, preschool programs for free. Um, but it does not allow them to go outside of our boundary, which means our eight towns, which includes Mendon and Chittenden, um, for preschool services where the, I think it's a stipend of $3,746 to follow them if they were to go to VAC, or Little Lambs, or somewhere else in Middlebury, um, or anywhere else. So, um, the discussion ensued, uh, so to give you a little bit more history, a few years ago, um, because there was some pushback on the boundary, the board allowed for five, um, lottery slots, meaning that if you were in this district but wanted to access, um, preschool elsewhere, we gave five lottery slots that people could use. Um, and so those have been being used, uh, up until now. And this year, we increased that, um, the lottery slots to 10. Uh, we don't have anybody waiting for, um, like in a backlog, we don't have anybody waiting for, um, to use them, but we wanted to see if there really was a need, um, to go elsewhere other than our own programs. So, and, um, based on what we're hearing from the legislature and the fact that, um, within two years we could have a full day four-year-old preschool here in schools, we may not need a boundary in the next year or so. But, uh, anyway, that is the RNESU Board Update. Anything you want to add, Kristen?
Uh, the only thing that I would add is on the RNESU consent agenda, um, we did, uh, they did approve, and we recognize that Marcia Bruce is retiring at the end of the year. Um, and for those of you who don't know, Marc has served in RNESU consecutively for 24 years, um, in the state of Vermont, in education for over 40. So it's a, it's a big loss, um, but we're pretty grateful.
That is true. Thank you.
So I have a boundary question.
Sure.
Is this a potential loss in revenue for the district?
I was going to ask that, too. The opposite. We didn't talk about the opposite, with letting kids in from other...
We let, we let kids in from other districts already, so we have about 12 of those, I think, we talked about. Um, yes, there is a potential impact of money, that $3,700 times five, which is another, you know, whatever, $18,000 or so. Um, maybe my math's wrong. Anyway, um, so yes, there is a potential impact. So the question is whether or not they're going to be used or not. If they're used, then it's a potential impact. If they're not used, then it doesn't cost us anything.
So why is it good policy to open the boundary further?
So the biggest concern is, is that, um, the boundary, so let me give you some even more history. We'll go back all the way to the beginning. So as you know, um, under the direction of, um, Bill...
Mathis?
Thank you. I couldn't remember his last name. Um, under the direction of Bill Mathis, um, RNESU was the first district, or supervisory union actually, to institute, um, universal preschool, allowing for any three and four-year-old who wanted to within the district to go for free for 10 hours. Um, the, about, I would say it's about 10 years ago now, maybe? The, um, maybe eight. Anyway, the legislature thought that was a really great idea, right? Universal preschool, bring the kids in early, get the, especially for those kids that are three and four years old that might need services. Takes a while to get them to services, so by the ti, if they get, if they get notified, if they're screened in as a three-year-old that needs services, sometimes they don't get those services until they're kindergarten, but they're already, um, we already know about it, and we can make sure that those services are, are there. What the legislature did was they looked at our program and said, "Oh my goodness, you guys have this robust program. We want to institute that throughout the entire state of Vermont." So they decided to say, "Okay, we want all districts to institute a preschool program." Kind of, they didn't say like RNESUs, but that's what they were saying. And all the, um, no other school district, I don't believe at this point, has ever said, "Oh yeah, let's make our own, our own preschool program and bring the kids in." They just said, "Okay, the money will follow the child." So they didn't do a boundary. We were one of only three, maybe, that did a boundary at the time, and that was because we did not want to lose our kids to other, other programs. We wanted to keep our kids in-house. So we have, um, vehemently protected that boundary for the last five or six, seven years. Um, it's been slowly being eroded away due to change in, uh, thought process, but in the next year to two years, it's going to be a, a no, it's not going to mean anything anymore anyway, because of the change in the legislature. Right now, it's a study for four-year-old preschool, um, to be a full day mandated, um, which will change our three-year-old preschool program tremendously. Um, but right now, we are more afraid of losing staff because we won't be able to know what our numbers are. And we would have to riff staff, um, if we were to say, "Okay, let's get rid of the boundary."
So what's the anticipated change in the legislature?
The anticipated change is that they say, "Okay, you're now going to have a full four-day, you're, a full four-year-old program, full day, five days a week."
So our teachers that do both now would...
Would only, and, and we wouldn't, we would have to figure out where we would put our three-year-olds, if we could put our three-year-olds anywhere, which would, could be devastating to our program. For our three-year-olds, maybe not. Um, three-year-olds that have been identified that may need services will still be able to come, but those who are not, won't. At least that's the way it's written right now. And again, it's probably going to take another year or so before it's fully in effect.
Yeah, that would be bad.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, it's in the, it's in the study, it's in a study format right now for enactment in the fall of 2026.
Right. So it's another two years away.
Thank you.
Yeah? Okay. Okay. Um, I believe the next thing on here was, uh, Board Professional Development. I got, I asked you guys to, um, think about it over the last couple of weeks, to say what you wanted for Board Professional Development, so that we could get some on the books.
Do we have a list going?
Excuse me?
Do we have a list going?
Um, if we do, I didn't bring it with me. So, I know one of the things you had talked about was having, excuse me, some, um, more professional development around policy governance, but not an intro class, more of a, "We've been doing this for so many years, let's, let's really do something more sophisticated." Um, that was one of them. Um, but was there any other professional development, things that you guys want to learn more about?
Just point anything.
Fair enough. Um, but if there's anything in the educational landscape, I mean, in two weeks, we're going to be talking to legislatures, the legislate, uh, legislative body. All nine people have said they're coming, which is, I think, a coup for us. Um, and so I really hope that we'll have a really robust, hour-long discussion back and forth about what they see coming down the pike and what we can say we hope that they will entertain and take back with them to Montpelier. So that is also what I would consider Board Professional Development, but, um... And if something comes up, I mean, we don't have to really have a, a, you know, a list going, but I would really like to, if you think of something, shoot me an email or something, because, you know, we did, Becky Waters brought to us Joanna Breakley. Does anyone remember when we met with Joanna Breakley? And she gave us a whole big thing about, I can't remember what it was about. It was about children and identifying children early, and, um, it was just a really good talk, something that we should know as board members.
I thought the trauma doctor was pretty good, the psychologist.
Okay. I think that was Joanna Breakley.
Oh, that's okay.
I think so, yeah. Would you like to have her come back, since we have a lot of new people?
Sure, might do some good.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. All right. Well then, if you think of something, please, um, send me an email or send something to Kristen. Um, Superintendent Report?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, so, uh, just, just a couple of things, um, uh, in the report. Um, we did have a community forum in October, um, which I'll talk about just in a second, but the next one coming up is open again for all RNESU families and community members. Um, it will take place on the 28th at 5:30, and it will continue around the theme of strategic planning and district needs. Um, informational, um, sort of FYI, Otter Valley Softball is planning to attend, um, the Jackie Robinson Complex in Florida again this spring, um, from April 17th to 22nd. Um, as Lori mentioned, uh, there are several open board seats, um, at OVO. Um, the petitions and the candidate consent forum are available on the RNESU website, which is linked in there. Um, you have the vacancy held by Derek, um, Natalie Fernanda, Jeremy, um, the vacancy held by Eric, Becky, and then Greg, as at-large. Also, BSBA has a variety of resources for prospective candidates, um, which you can find on their website, and I also linked in the Superintendent's report. Uh, just sort of a, a piece of information to be aware of. It still is a little bit away, um, but it's going to have a fairly significant impact on board governance. Um, the passage of the new district qualities, uh, standards, specifically Series 100, has a lot of mandates, um, for school boards, uh, governance priorities, governance protocols, governance processes, self-evaluation, three-year, um, required reviews, enforcement of the policies, and then publication of metrics regarding the outcome of district quality reviews. The new rules take effect on July 1st of 2025. Um, and again, they are going to end up governing all boards, district, and supervisory unions, regardless of your, um, governance model. Uh, Strategic Planning Update, um, the October Community Forum was focused on values, mission, and vision, had around 10 participants in this group. Um, the group expressed confidence in the current RNESU mission and vision, which is really focused on character, competence, creativity, and community. Um, folks still really love those. Although, most of them didn't know that that was the RNESU mission. Um, the work will continue at the upcoming community forum. Uh, additionally, just for your information, each school has a scheduled faculty meeting to discuss values, goals, and needs across the system. So we'll sort, sort of start that conversation with, um, faculty and staff. A similar conversation has already started, and we'll keep going at the upcoming parent advisory, um, and student advisory council meetings. The student advisory group meets tomorrow. Um, and schools are also working to find additional times during the school year, um, where they can specifically engage student councils, but also non-student councils, um, in the conversation. So for instance, Neshabie, um, you know, allowing third through sixth graders to sort of have these conversations with us as well. Um, first round surveys have gone out to families and staff. Uh, we're grabbing ahold of that, um, data right now, sort of in their interest, um, about working on strategic plan, and also values, needs, and broadly speaking, what they, um, think we need to focus on in the next five years. Um, RNESU schools are featured in the Rutland Herald at the end of October. I've linked that in there as well. Um, I sort of shared the, um, generally speaking, no one reached out to the OVO board in October, uh, but reach out continues to be, uh, a good tool for us to use. Um, and then a couple of, uh, other pieces of information that didn't make it on the Superintendent Report, but sort of have popped since then, that I just want to draw your attention to. Um, again, on the consent agenda for RNESU today, we recognize that Marcia Bruce is retiring. Uh, her position is a big deal for our district, as most of you know. Uh, so just a heads up, uh, that position will be posted later in the week. Um, we'll close it right around the 10th of December. Um, we'll grab a committee, uh, to sort of get together after the Thanksgiving holiday to talk about questions and wants for the new director. Um, and we will hope to get things first and second round, um, closed up, um, before the December holiday. Um, also, um, in the consent agenda for, um, this evening, you noticed a couple of longstanding, uh, faculty who have, are submitted their retirement. Kim Faber, longstanding, fifth grade teacher at Neshabie is retiring. Um, Mary Heath, uh, also longstanding teacher, PE teacher at Neshabie, um, is retiring. Uh, the school will work on filling those vacancies. Um, and then also, uh, you may have noticed on the consent agenda, um, another top-to-bill position, Vicki Wells is, um, also leaving at the end of the year. Her timeline, the timeline for that will be fairly similar to Marcia's, um, but will be a little bit later. Um, and within that, we are going to, uh, push that back after the December holiday to start interviews after, um, the first of the year, but we will get that posted by the end of this week. Um, and we will reach out to staff and families, uh, to participate in the interview process, and we will also have staff community forums, um, so that parents and, and staff can meet the candidates. Um, OVO's got the Fall Musical happening next week, Spun Spaw. If you don't already have the tickets, it's not too late. Um, speaking of Marcia Bruce, and RNESU in the news, uh, Marcia will be featured in the Brandon Reporter. She'll have a whole feature article. We're pretty excited about that. Looking forward to that. And then the last, um, piece of information, just, uh, for your inf, or for your info, is I shared, um, an email from, uh, Brian Crane at Our Creek Academy, that we learned last week that, um, OCA has come off from the list of schools in need of comprehensive supports and in need of improvement. Um, that's a pretty big deal. Uh, for them to have gotten that checkmark, it meant that they were in the, the bottom 5% of all Vermont schools, which is certainly not a designation that anyone is looking forward to, or was looking forward to. Um, so I did have a call from Secretary Boucher last week to let me know that the AOV had massive errors in their, um, data infrastructure, um, which sort of caused the SNAPU. And so all of the schools that were, uh, designated as the bottom 5%, were not. And in fact, the real 5% got notice, um, notification last week. So anyways, good news for us, less goodness for someone else. Um, so that's it for me.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So, um, we do have an executive session tonight. Um, so what I'm going to do is, um, um, suspend the meeting at this moment. Come on in, Trish. Um, you can sit wherever you like, um, and give you time to break down, um, because we'll do the executive session outside of, um, the meeting and allow you to head out as well. Okay?
Recording stopped.
So, um, we're going to suspend the meeting for about 10 minutes, so 7:15. We'll come back at 7:25. Okay? All right. Thank you.